Welcome to, we have a special meeting of the Seneca County Industrial Development Agency. We do have a quorum, so we'll start. First item on the agenda is approval of the IDA move minutes from September 1st. Everyone received a copy in their packet. If there's any comments, corrections, changes. Hearing none, clear of motion to approve.
Second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Second item on the agenda is review of the IDA long-term forecast.
So I will go through this rather quickly unless anybody has questions. We did look at this earlier this month. This does not require board approval, but we do the long-term forecast two times a year. Once with the audit and once with the budget, just to give you all an idea of in the worst-case scenario, which is the first scenario you see, so where we only have our known revenues against what our anticipated expenses are, how we would be doing. And as you can see here, so we've projected for five years out. We would still be cash flow positive at the end of that five years with an estimated $83,000 in cash on hand by the end of 2028. But obviously, you know, this would not be the ideal or positive scenario for the IDA. We do have in here, a key thing of note is the rental income, $100,000. That's our annual payment from Delago that is scheduled to drop off after 2024. So we will no longer have that as guaranteed income. The other fees that you see are sector agency fee, which we get every year. And then we have our annual fee from the county in addition to what we anticipate for interest from loans and other accounts. But that's really that first schedule. The second schedule is where we forecast $400,000 of income per year. This is closer to historically what we have seen with the IDA. Again, against anticipated expenses at the end of a five-year period. Under this scenario, we would expect the IDA to have about 1.4 million cash on hand. Questions?
Next item on the agenda is presentation of the proposed 2023 IDA budget.
All right, so again, I'll try to just touch on the highlights here. There likely will be some changes. So here in the proposed budget, you see 1.3 million in agency fees expected to come in in 2023. I actually believe some of that will come in in 2022 because we're going to close on the sales tax exemption portion for the Tralina project before the end of this year. And so we're going to bill half the agency fee at that time. So you'll see those numbers work out differently, probably when we get to our actual financials. So it'll be a little bit less than 1.3 probably for 2023. Other than that, we've got our Seneca County support, again, the Delago payments, and then our other interest income, giving us total operating revenues of approximately 1.49 million dollars for 2023. Payroll benefits are expected to stay largely on target. We have included a 3% cost of living adjustment, but obviously that is all subject to governance committee recommendation and then board approval, which we anticipate to be on the agenda for December. Other than that, professional fees and services, estimated $98,000. You can see the breakdown on the second page, by the way, for any of these categories, if you want more details. There really aren't substantial changes being made on this front. We have added a PR line, $5,000, under professional services, just in the anticipation of some projects where we may want to do some more proactive press with the help of a professional firm. Other than that, everything is largely the same. The $10,000 engineering is our annual that we reserve for Fisher Associates. We don't typically spend that. There's a few others that we don't typically get to the full contract amount, business retention being one of them, and legal costs being another. So that's professional fees, general office. We're budgeting $11,750. That is down a little bit because we did purchase in 2022. We purchased a new printer, which is where the difference comes between the two years there. Admin and technical, that's largely the same as it's always been. Dues and subscriptions is being proposed higher, but that's because when we redid our chart of accounts, we moved our GRE membership, which was previously classified as marketing and promotion, to dues and subscriptions where all of our other membership organization dues are located. So there really isn't any net change there. Traveling conferences, about the same as it usually is in the budget. And let's see, nothing else has really changed otherwise on the expense side.
What's CRM again?
Customer relationship management system. So we started, we got our CRM like fall of 2020, and that is how we track our active and potential projects and all of our interactions with businesses in the community.
Software subscription.
Yes. Yep, so that's our annual software subscription. Any other questions on operating expenses? Okay, then we'll get to other income, other expenses. So there are a couple of key items of note here. So in 2023, you'll see we are proposing $93,000 in other income. That is the amount that is remaining on our outstanding working capital grant from the state. We are proposing to use the balance of that plus an additional $100,000 that we've put under site development expense to cover an RFP for highest invest use study. So based on our historical data that we have from when we did the evaluation assessment of the Hillside property, the industrial park study, and others, we feel that roughly $200,000 should be enough to cover the scope of this study. Obviously, we won't know for sure until we get bids back from an RFP. But the county has made mention before that potentially there could be some ARPA funding available to help support something like that as well.
In our previous discussions, weren't we only talking about we had $100,000 for that? Now you're saying we have 193?
So we have 93 that's still remaining in our grant funding. So that's approximately the $100,000. This is the specific number. And then we anticipate that highest invest use study is going to cost more than what we have remaining. So we are proposing an extra $100,000 in the budget. So we would have a total of 193 all in.
Available.
Available.
And approval of the budget does not approve us to spend that amount. Obviously, bids would need to come back and would need to go to the board for review and approval. And at that time, if a bid were accepted, that would be authorization for us to spend the funds.
Is this anticipation of us spending the whole amount versus the county adding some to the pot?
Correct.
In case the county doesn't want to kick in?
The county has made comments that they would be willing to kick in. We haven't talked about how much. My thoughts have kind of been that Willard is going to be a very large project in scope. And ultimately, if we push for local control, which is where I'm thinking this is going based on conversations we've had, there are going to be ongoing costs of maintenance, insurance, other things that if we can manage to fund just this highest invest use study through the IDA, I think that would make the case to the county that, you know, their role could be and should be on the maintenance side. Obviously, if it is more than what we budgeted for, we would certainly want to go to the county. And I believe that they would be supportive. And the county manager and a few of the supervisors have said that they would be willing to have those conversations. But, you know, we have gotten in quite a bit lately in agency fees, and it would, you know, be an ideal use for something like that. And certainly, this would not put us in any sort of jeopardy in terms of our cash position or long-term standing. It's relatively, you know, small expenditure that we're talking about compared to the grand scheme of things.
On this topic, Sarah has mentioned that she attends a weekly call that is One Seneca Group. And we had, back in May, someone from the real estate consulting industry come in and talk just about how do you approach these types of projects? And this is a guy with ties to the area, but not a resident or a bidder, not likely bidder in any case. As this has taken, I think, a positive sort of turn here, I think, to the credit of Sarah here. I reached out to him and said, you know, the wheels are turning. They're moving seemingly in the right direction. Do you have any advice, do you have any templates? Do you have anybody that has done a project similar enough to this where we might get the benefit of some of that experience? And he said, I should be happy to look, happy to look and see. This was just last week, so I suspect we might get some at least range of what these firms tend to charge. I mean, there's some, you know, there's going to be, I think, some pressure to use someone locally, maybe Rochester, someone from the central New York area. I think we're going to have to look at maybe going outside the area if we want the very top firms without any sort of local connection. So my guess is 200 is light. We'll see. And that was paid for.
Yeah.
But we should just be prepared, at least to look at these numbers and look pretty careful as, because carefully at this, because it's that consultant that tends to frame the whole subject pretty clearly. And we're going to say to them, what's the highest and best use? And they're going to say to us, well, what do you want? How much public use do you want in this area? What's your set of priorities? And I frankly don't know how we arrive at a set of what our priorities for this are. So we're marching down that road.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is going to be a big project, and a lot of the price tag is going to come down to ultimately what types of firms we hire and what the total scope is of the study. We've talked a little bit in meetings already about some of the things that would be included and, you know, potentially an as-is appraisal of the site, a complete inventory of the site and sort of assessment of what's there. You know, market research that would support what the highest invest use is from sort of a data standpoint, but also public input sessions that would sort of provide more local context of what people would like to see. There could also be some analysis in there of how the redevelopment should take place or what incentives would help make, you know, some of these aspects of development more feasible, especially when it comes to historical designations, whether or not it's worth it to pursue or not pursue in certain instances. So there's a lot of potential information that we could try to tap into, and we'll have to shape some of that as we go with the RFP and then also, you know, in discussions with developers. And, you know, I do agree with you, Bruce. I think that this is going to be a project that is probably, I mean, maybe there would be local firms qualified, but it's going to be pretty large in scope. And so we've been working with GRE, and they've been shaking down some leads for us on firms that they could, you know, recommend for us to ultimately send a package to and, you know, invite them to bid so that we make sure that we're getting people that have done these types of things. And then ultimately, depending on how this goes and what firm we would choose, you know, could also turn into leads for potential developers down the road, people that would actually be interested in acquiring the site. So.
So real quick, just running down the timeframe in my mind, if you put this out to bid, you're thinking by the first of the year, we'll have somebody maybe lined up to do this?
I have a, of course, I have it in the office, a Gantt chart that has kind of the RFP timeline laid out. If I'm recalling correctly, with all of our board meetings and how long it would take us to, we would need to, you know, allow people to respond, get the RFP drafted, and then evaluate the firms. I believe feasibly, we could expect to have the board make a decision on a firm to hire by February, our February meeting. I think January would be too soon, given the timeline of holidays and everything. In some cases, February might be a little bit ambitious. We'll have to stick pretty strictly to the timeline. But then the goal would be to ultimately have the study done and the findings sort of ready to be shared with the public by May-June timeline, and then go from there.
So I'm just thinking, what we heard the other day, the state's looking to get rid of that. They're going to keep the heat on this winter?
Yes.
So like, based on your timeline, doesn't sound like we're going to have much time to, if they decide to pull the trigger, who's going to heat that next winter?
Well, so that is, I'm glad you brought that up. And obviously, that is an ongoing concern. So one of the things that One Seneca has talked about, and Jeff and Mitch and I have talked about, is setting up a special task force to handle sort of agnostic of any individual agency, this concept of redeveloping Willard. Obviously, the highest and best use study would live with the IDA, with us sort of being the ones primarily leading that. But there are other aspects of this redevelopment that really tap into everybody else's sort of areas of expertise and knowledge. And one of the things that this task force would be needed to accomplish is an assessment of, okay, if we push for local control of this property, which hypothetically could happen in tandem with us doing this study, or we may say we want to wait until the study is done first. You know, that, I think, would ultimately be for the group to maybe consider the pros and cons and advise on the best timeline. But aside from that, would also be, okay, insurance for the property, heating, electric, all of these, you know, mowing, maintenance costs, what costs are out there? What would we need to anticipate being able to cover for this property if it gets transferred locally? What sources of funding are out there, either that we already have in the community that we could use, or what does the state have that we can advocate for and tap into? And then it would be a matter of coming up with a strategy and a game plan and saying, okay, here is how we are going to approach each piece. So we know whether we decide to ask for the state to extend that. Period of heating, they haven't said that they won't potentially continue to do that, but that would be something that we would want to evaluate and say, okay, worst-case scenario, here's what happens, best-case scenario, here's what happens, and try to have contingency plans for everything.
When you say the state transferring the site to local control, who, what entity would be that controlling entity?
That's a good question. It varies. So I've been talking with other IDA directors in other counties where they have closed correctional facilities, and it is ultimately whatever is sort of best for the community. In both of those cases, their IDAs or their ADCs are pushing for control as sort of primary economic development agency. The case could also be made potentially for a land bank. But I think ultimately would be, in our case, either the IDA or our EDC as the ones potentially doing that. But you could also, you know, push for Seneca County as a municipality. Obviously, that brings its own challenges as everything there would then need to go through the Board of Supervisors, and then you're subject to, you know, political whims and elections every two years, whereas we're a little bit more consistent here with our longer terms.
You know, we were, Tom and I and several people were at the last tour. On that tour was Representative of NISIG.
Yes.
My sense was that they're, NISIG is sort of not aware of what's inside the walls there. There are, it was just an example of some of the unknowns in just the physical structure. It's just, it's a pretty, it's a pretty substantial lift
Yes.
to take, to be the one who takes control of that thing.
Yes.
And I'm, we should be sure we know what we're taking control of in the event we do.
Yes, so that is sort of the, that's the key purpose of the task force and of the study is the more information we have to make and empower decision, informed decision, the better. You know, there is also a scenario where we decide not to take local control, and the state puts out competitive RFP to redevelop the, you know, the property. Obviously, our involvement looks different in that scenario than if it's ultimately owned by someone. So there are all kinds of considerations to be made and a lot of legwork and research that needs to be done. A lot of working with our partners at NISIG to get an assessment of the utilities and where things stand and, you know. Don't mistake my optimism for
Look, I'm
for thinking this is going to be an easy project. By no means is this going to be a simple or easy undertaking. It's one of those, as long as we all stay on the same page and follow the process and the steps and, you know, figure out what we need to know, you know, we can make the most informed decisions. But it's definitely going to be a challenge, and it's really going to require the buy-in of everybody in the community, not just, you know, the members of this board.
I think the issue, the wish I have is, looking at everything, I think the IDA, IDA, EDC, however you want to put it, is the appropriate agency to take the lead to develop and make this happen. The question is, who, if it does go under local control, does it, hate to have another one of these local control where, well, let's go back, the IDA took control of the Sampson Memorial Cemetery, which means you run it, you finance it, you get it, and that's it. And it's something that we can't handle ourselves. So whether, you know, it actually goes to Seneca County to own and hold, but the IDA to lead the, sort of the, what's the best use, make everything happen. Of course, that needs pretty good coordination and cooperation between the two entities. Just my personal hesitation of, you know, the IDA doesn't have that, you know, financial whatever where we can actually take ownership, yet I don't see that anyone other than the ID would be the best agency to lead this. So it really need, I drew like a little diagram sort of for Sarah too on kind of my thoughts. And, you know, the county is the one that needs to sort of own this, but the IDA, right in the middle, needs to have a probably appropriate agency to deal with the RFPs and deal with the outside and make this happen in coordination with all the other agencies that are out there, which is going to be a trick.
I think there's a lot of room for flexibility and creativity, but obviously, before we push for any kind of local control and whoever might potentially own it, there would need to be agreements in place in terms of, you know, who is going to fund what, who is responsible for what. And that wouldn't just be agreements between, say, the IDA and the county, but also with the state, because we are working closely with our regional reps and also the state reps at Empire State Development. You know, they may very well have funding that can ultimately, you know, support us. So nothing is going to happen without, you know, all the formal commitments in place. And we've done this before, you know, and depending on who you talk to, depends on how successful they think we were. But we can use those previous experiences to make sure that we don't, you know, make the same mistakes as far as being stuck with something that ends up being costing more than what anybody anticipated. You know, let's go into it with all the information, eyes wide open, so that we can plan appropriately.
All the more reason to get this consultant on board and underway.
So going sort of back to the budget, the $93,000 is a remainder of a grant. We were anticipating spending all of that. I think that's up at the end of June or something.
We have the grant through December 2023.
So definitely go with that. And the $100,000 is sort of a nice placeholder coming out of our operating budget, which may be more, may be less, but it's at this point, and it's $100,000 because that's the nicest, roundest number that we could come up with right now. And obviously, any of that spending, as Sarah says, that needs to come out of And obviously, any of that spending, as Sarah says, that needs to come out of an agreement at a different meeting, what we would spend.
And it wouldn't jeopardize cash flow?
No, our, our budget, as it stands, is projected to come in with a net gain of $904,000. And as far as agency fees go, you guys can see on the breakdown where all the estimate comes from. Actually, the largest part of it is Trulina. For 2023, we don't estimate projects that we don't have applications for yet. Obviously, we do still have a decent flow of applications coming in. So, you know, we would anticipate our revenue to be more than what we are proposing here, but this is sort of our known factors. Other questions or discussion?
I would like to fall back to the top up there.
Yes.
$54,000 for the county.
Yes.
It's been that number for a long, long time.
Yeah.
Time to ask them for more? I mean, the atmosphere on the county,
I mean, for this year, it's too late. So they've already put in, or Mitch is about to put in his budget recommendations for the year. But certainly, we could, you know, discuss making a bigger ask in the future. Obviously, you know, some of you certainly know better than I do that the IDA used to get, I think, I think the county manager told me at one point it was like $120,000 that the IDA used to get from the county. And then that number sort of then
Yeah, then it went to
diminished over time.
And then it was 10% less.
I think if we were to make that ask, we would need a really solid justification of reason for what we wanted that additional money for. I know that the county Board of Supervisors has really started to put, you know, like the Chamber and everyone else under the microscope as far as partner agencies that receive funding and, you know, wanting to know what those dollars are being spent on. Obviously, you know, we're in a good position not to say that, you know, we couldn't use extra cash and that it couldn't be put to good use on projects like Willard or others. But I think we would really need to have a serious discussion about how do we make the case to Seneca County that, you know, with how well we've been doing agency fee-wise, that we still need that extra support from the county.
We, we've got a big windfall from Trulina.
Yes.
You know, Micron has made an announcement about putting a chip manufacturer in the Sylveon, in the Syracuse area. Historically, those kinds of businesses swan all kinds of related businesses. And they tend to be, you know, geographically contiguous or close by. You could make a case that that could be a significant enough development in the central New York, central New York economy, that we should begin now to try to line ourselves up to be able to kind of take, take part in that growth somehow. And, and to go to these big chip manufacturers and say, okay, what are the ancillary businesses that you actually follow on? And how many of those could we either create or tap or expand or attract? And we're never going to attract Micron to Seneca County, but we may attract, who knows what related business? And that by itself is going to have to come from somewhere. I mean, the, the work to do that has to come from somewhere.
And that's where it's important to have an industrial site someplace that's ready, shovel ready for somebody to move into.
Possibly, yeah.
It needs to be, Willard's never going to fill that, I don't think. It's too far away from Main Roads. We need to be near the thruway. So that's why, if we could get more money from the county
Yeah.
to go toward that end of developing that industrial site.
Specific items.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly haven't given up, uh, a hope on trying to develop an industrial site. It definitely would involve us having to go back to the drawing board and evaluating what properties are available and potentially piecemealing a few together in order to get something that's really sizable enough.
The property across from Delago that was going to be the trailer place, now that's up for sale again, I see.
Yes.
So has, have you looked at that? I mean, I don't want, what we can say here, we can't say.
Because of sewer.
So that one, I mean, we, is something that maybe we, we could look at potentially. Obviously, there were challenges there related to getting sewer and water extended and all of the cost associated with running it from Delago, and then also the complexity because you can't have two private sewer users in the same line feeding into a public line. So that would need to be transferred to the county. And so there are things that could be done and maybe the case could be made that, you know, our involvement would make that a more feasible industrial property. But certainly, I think if we wanted to reopen the discussion of an industrial park, we would want to go back and, you know, really build a more comprehensive list of all of the properties that are available and, you know, how could we potentially evaluate these and make these work as an industrial site? Anything else on the budget or other?
So that was a very good discussion. So with all that said, we need to post this to Paris, and so we need approval from the board. So I ask for a motion to approve the IDA budget so we can post to Paris.
I'll make a motion.
Second? Second. Kelly?
Mr. Brusso?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Tom Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Kine, Mr. Shipley, and Mr. Trout, absent motion here.
Next on the list is the engagement letter for the audit.
So this is the engagement letter from our existing audit firm, Mangle Metzger &amp; Barr, to perform the regular IDA audit for $11,375. And then the single audit, which is of our revolving loan fund program for $1,975, for a total of just over $13,000. This price is a little bit higher than it was last year. They usually raise their audit fees a little bit every year. Obviously, there was the one error that we found in this most recent audit that was caught by our accountant and then was later rectified. We are going to be taking steps to more closely monitor them this year to ensure that nothing happens again. And obviously, if it did then next year, when it comes time to select our audit firm, we'll probably be having a very different discussion. But the recommendation has been made from the Audit Committee to approve the engagement letter and to continue using Mangle Metzger &amp; Barr for our 2022 audit.
I move?
So, yeah. So any questions? If not, yeah, motion to approve.
13,350 this year, what was it last year? Do you know?
Kelly, do you have the exact number?
Uh, well, it was, it's in the
Your budget sheet.
So 2022 auditor, so it was $11,050 for just the IDA audit. And then RLF expense.
So, yeah, so 325.
Then it was $1,825 for the single audit.
Right.
And this 13,350 is both on combined this year?
This is combined, yes. So
It was $12,250 last year. And this year it's $13,350.
Right.
So the difference is 725.
Yeah, so it's about $300, 325 more on the regular audit, and then the single audit is, you know, about $125 more than it was last year.
Reasonable increase.
So we have a motion to approve. Need a second? I'm second. So Kelly?
Mr. Brusso?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Tom Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley, Mr. Kine, and Mr. Trout, absent motion here.
Next item, we've had some good discussions so far on this. This is discussion for a request for proposal for highest and best use study of Willard.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've already discussed this quite a bit, but if anybody has questions, this would be approval for us to go out and draft the RFP. We would do so, obviously, based on whatever information Bruce's contact is able to provide, along with consultation from our partners at GRE and also obviously Rob Halpin. We would then send something out and then it would come back to the board for approval once we are in the stage of considering bid responses. Just for some context for all of you.
I am, I would move that we proceed with the RFP development initiatives.
Second?
Second.
Second. So Kelly?
Mr. Brusso?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Tom Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley, Mr. Trout, Mr. Kine, absent motion here.
Uh, next item is an update from the Chamber of Commerce. Jeff is not present. Anyone else who has any quick update on? If not, the next item would have been update from the Seneca County Board of Supervisors and Bob Trout. If there's anything that's notable.
And they're working on their budget process right now. But the county manager did put in our annual $54,000. There's no reason to believe that that won't be approved sort of as requested. So that's really the only thing I have.
Next item is the third quarter report by Sarah, which everyone has in their packet.
Yep, so I will kind of touch on the highlights here. Obviously, we have a few key metrics that we've been tracking every year. We set these goals at the beginning of the year. And one of those key things is our business retention and expansion program. For this year, we had a goal of getting 50 business visits. As of when this report was done, we had done 46, so we're well on track. I think now we are actually at about the 54 mark, because I was just looking this morning, which is good. So we're trying to, you know, be out there and be more engaged with the business community and trying to interact, you know, not just once with folks, if we can help it, really get a sense of the issues and what's going on. Obviously, we're continuing to see feedback that the biggest challenge right now, or I would say one of the biggest challenges right now continues to be companies' ability to hire and retain workforce, especially in the southern part of the county where there's sort of less of a population center. That continues to be a challenge. Folks are, you know, competing for all the same people. We've been working closely with the County Workforce Development Office to try to get, you know, people through the door, but it's one of those challenges everybody's sort of having. And, you know, obviously, there's no quick or easy answer, but we're doing what we can to try to help alleviate those burdens. Also, we have about 35 projects in our pipeline as of when this report was done. So our project pipeline is continuing to grow, which is positive. Obviously, as we move projects through our approval process, those then come out of the pipeline as wins. So these are 35, you know, potential future projects, not necessarily the active ones that we have. In terms of our active projects, we have about three currently. So Seneca Gardens Solar has gone through its final board approval with you all this year, and we are just awaiting closing. Five S Development Project has gone through initial board approval. We're waiting on a public hearing for that. And then Wilkins RV, the CAGR process has actually been completed by the town, and we expect final resolution to be on the agenda for our November 3 meeting, which is just next week. So those are positive. Those three projects are expected to invest approximately $27.5 million in the county, retaining 57 employees, creating 32 new ones and over 120 construction jobs.
Do we have a date for the Five S public hearing yet?
We do not. We are waiting on them to give us the go-ahead to proceed with the scheduling of that.
I think the pipeline is really helpful, really. Ideally, you have a way, I mean, in a perfect world, you have a way to estimate the likelihood and then associate it, kind of stream both to the county and to the IDA so that when you look at our five-year forecast
Yeah.
you can tie it into that pipeline.
That would be ideal. I would love to get to that. It's tricky to project revenue based on what we have in our pipeline, because sometimes we'll go and we'll be meeting with a business and they say, oh, yeah, I want to maybe expand my tasting room or do something, you know, in the next couple of years, but they don't even have estimates yet. That always makes it tricky, but we do have unofficially, I mean, we don't break it down into percentages, but our system does allow us to classify sort of the strength of a lead. So we do sort of have that. And I will probably make a note for the year-end report to try to give a breakdown of how many are strong possibilities of converting. I can give you that information.
That's helpful. And, you know, and, you know, sales organizations do this, and salespeople are expected to say, look, I'll close this month, next quarter, the next quarter, the next quarter. Everyone realizes it's a guess, but it's at least a best guess. Gives us at least a chance to say, well,
Optimism.
Well, or, or in 2020, in 2020, except for, we at least have some visibility on our, on our revenue stream.
Yes.
And we're just
Goals, yeah.
And we're not just living off Trulina for the next
Right.
and these other projects.
Right.
That's all. It's just kind of comfortable.
Yes, there are still a few that I had expected us to receive this year that haven't come in yet, and I'm in the process of following up with those folks to see if circumstances have changed or if it's just a matter of timing. But at the year-end report, I will make a note to try to give you a more clear breakdown of the likelihood of some of these projects converting into wins, we'll say over the next year or two.
Another question, there's a, a housing, the county got a grant for housing, to do a housing study. I don't know where housing falls. I know if Jeff Shipley were here from the count, from the Chamber, Jeff is, I think, keenly aware of housing issues on the, not so much on the farm worker housing or the service worker housing, possibly on the housing cost board. Has, is the IDA eligible to be active in the housing market in any way?
We are. Obviously, we have done a couple of projects. The board previously was a little bit uncertain because housing was a newer sort of project scope for us, and it's not sort of a traditional job creator. But in 2020, the board did approve the Huntington Apartments Project, which has been slow, mostly because of state process for them giving, you know, all of their grants and tax credits and everything, approved and in place for that. But that continues to move forward. And then in the past, there were, the IDA board, I believe, 2018, 2019, approved a couple of projects for mixed-use redevelopment in the Village of Waterloo. So there has been the case. But based on my experience, it seems to be in cases where we're doing adaptive reuse of a building into housing or mixed-use commercial residential development as opposed to incentives for an existing housing facility that is renovating or expanding. Not to say that we couldn't consider that, but it would be probably worthwhile to have a discussion as a group of how do we want to look at these projects and evaluate that.
Something may come out of this whole housing study that registers with us. We have farmer for housing issues.
Yeah.
Which is an economic issue for a lot of people down, at least in the, in your business where there's a lot of property in the area.
And I'm thinking housing is going to be one of the key topics when it comes to the redevelopment of Willard.
One piece of Willard could be, yeah.
Potentially.
Intersecting.
So, so will the study look at that? I mean, what, what do people want? Do they want to move into a Huntington-type building or a Willard-type building to live? Or do they want to have a new construction home out on a couple acres?
That's, Ralph, that's exactly what this study is supposed to figure out.
Yeah.
Exactly. Because, because looking for a site for new construction homes is no different than us looking for an industrial site. You need the same things. You need
Infrastructure.
Roads.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You tell them you need sewer.
Got the whole thing.
Yep.
It's a tough deal.
So it's, that is the So it's, that is the intent of the county's housing study is to determine exactly where there are gaps. And they did post a couple of public meetings related to that. They did one down in Ovid and then one more recently in Seneca Falls and got some feedback. But they are working with a firm, I think, out of Rochester that is Rochester or Buffalo that is going to be doing the final findings and summary of everything.
When is that report due out?
I don't recall. I don't know if.
I don't know either, you know. It's not been all that widely publicized. I just don't know how, how much input there is on this.
It's.
You have to create more work between everybody else. It's a scenario that you see as a deficit here.
Yeah.
Across the board.
Anecdotally, I mean, I would say that we probably have a shortage in just about every type of housing. You know, I know it was tricky a couple of years ago when my husband and I were looking to move our family here for this job. You know, so everything from sort of traditional single-family residences to, you know, apartments and low-income senior housing. I mean, you know, Jeff was able to attend. I unfortunately wasn't able to go, but Jeff did attend the input session that the county did in Seneca Falls. And he made sure to bring up the, you know, sort of middle-income, single-family residences being a need. There were a lot of folks, he said, from like social services background that were talking about, you know, some of the things that we hear most frequently in the community, which is low-income senior housing.
Housing for the disabled?
Housing for the disabled came up. Migrant worker housing has obviously come up. So it's obviously a real.
Actually, it's across the board. There's so many different elements that need, need attention there.
Ultimately, it's probably going to take some kind of long-term strategy that says, okay, here's how we should go about addressing each of those pieces and, you know, the resources we can use to do that.
Is the migrant housing thing still a big deal? Because I thought Earl was filling that depot. Now, because I see buses, we farmed down there near that.
Yeah, so that's.
I see buses morning and night going in and out of there all the time.
He was, honestly, I'm not sure if he still is. He did have an inquiry from a company. I think they were based out of Rochester that does migrant housing, and they wanted to lease space from him. And they were under an agreement. Like I said, I don't know if that's still the case, but the town of Baric, I think is where Hillside is, the town of Baric zoning board had some issues with using that campus for residential housing, which I think might have put the kibosh on that, which is somewhat unfortunate given that it's a need and, you know, that there is a lot of space there. Obviously, Earl is using some of it, but it's really more than he can use at any single point in time. So there is still that need.
Yeah, we, I mean, I don't know what this guy does. It's a big issue. I mean, we rent apartments for document, you know, H2A visa holding workers. We buy big vehicles for them. Pay $1,000 a month for bedroom apartments and spring metals apartments down there. So we're, I'm very familiar with this. There aren't that many choices.
Yeah.
So I guess anything more on the quarterly report? Brother Business, just really briefly. Everyone having fun about, this is sort of the, sort of initial, so it's a little bit more than a draft, but it's initial look at the quarterly financial data. This is a separate, oh, yeah, right in front. So Bob Kernan, CFO, put this together. The goal was to take the numbers that you see on the basic financial reports and put a little bit more visual to it, put a graph to it so you can see graphs here on income trends, expense, asset, liability, and equity. So something to take a look at. We won't go over this today. Normally, these numbers, the third quarter ends at the end of September. The numbers would be developed in October and then shared during the November ID. So this will really be that. So really more of a introduction, take a look at it. Oh, the one thing that we had talked about too, as you notice, these trends are, let's see what, three years.
It's worth. All four years.
Yeah. Of quarters. And on a, a lot of this is on a cumulative, like expenses are on a cumulative basis versus a quarterly basis. There's been some input where should this really be where we're looking at income and expenses out of quarterly and it's graph quarterly versus cumulatively? So something, again, take a look at.
So just glancing at it, why do, why does everything crash in the first quarter? Expenses adding up?
So part of that is what Steve was saying. So if you notice, on the expense side, payroll really shows this. So Q1 2020 payroll was $22,846. Q4 2020 payroll was not $156,000 for that quarter by itself.
It's a cumulative.
That is cumulative from the beginning to the end. So one thing that we probably will look at doing is what is actually the maybe incremental change for each quarter so we can see where there are fluctuations versus where it's stagnant?
So it's sort of building and then it goes down. You're starting another quarter.
Yes.
And builds again, then crashes again.
Yes.
All right.
But if anybody has feedback or something, a certain way that you would like to see the data presented, you know, let us know. Because the whole point is to make this a, hopefully, a useful tool for you guys to see sort of the, you know, trends.
It can be easily manipulated, too.
Yeah.
It is a lot easier to read than all those little numbers.
Well, we redesigned the financials, balance sheet, P and L statement. This will be a supplement to that as well. And I'm only, if there's suggested changes, just let me know. I can, I can deal with that.
And maybe where income and expense are true quarterly where the asset trends and liability and equities are, remains as. Again, something.
Different ways of showing it.
So now, any need for an executive session?